Hello, welcome to the City of Malala Planning Commission meeting for July 2nd, 2025. Please join me in this flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have roll call.
Commissioner Hodgkinson, present.
Commissioner Ornalis, present.
Commissioner Eaglebear, present.
Commissioner Ansel, present.
Commissioner Potts, present.
Commissioner Ricky, present.
Community Development Technician Jessica Worth, present.
Senior Planner Dan Zinder, not Planning Manager Dan Zinder, present.
Assistant City Manager Mac Corrathel, present.
I know, it still says it.
Thank you. Next, we have the, it's like a consent agenda. So may I have a motion to amend and adopt the consent agenda for the meeting minutes of June 4th?
I motion to approve the consent agenda for June 4th.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion regarding those minutes? All right. Ms. Worth, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Ansel.
Aye.
Commissioner Ornalis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky.
Aye.
Commissioner Potts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodgkinson.
Aye.
And Chairman Eaglebear.
Aye.
Thank you, the vote passes. Three, four, six, zero.
I think she doesn't have gloves or mittens on.
All right. Well, thank you. The presentation, we don't have any presentation. Public comment. Now is the time to receive public comment on items not listed on the agenda. Citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens shall complete and a comment form and deliver it to the support staff. Planning Commission does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments but may refer the issue to the Community Development Director. Complaints shall first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the Planning Commission. Did this, have we received, the staff received any written communication?
We have received one comment with regards to the UGB expansion that's been presented to the council. Would you like me to read it into the record?
I don't think we need to.
You don't need to, it's a hundred percent your guys' call.
Yeah, there's no reason for us.
Yeah, no, we've read it and seen it.
Alrighty.
We need to read this into the record.
It will be included in the record. So you don't have to read it in, it was just if you wanted to, you can.
I'd read it for you.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much. Was there any other comment, other comments, anything else? All right. We are not having a hearing this evening. And general business, Mr. Corrathel.
Chair, before I get started, can I request a motion to amend the agenda from the commission? Unfortunately, this is not the correct title. It's actually what we're going to be talking about tonight is Senate Bill, Senate Bill 974. So it should have said SB 974. We had some more items to share with you guys, but unfortunately, we lost a staff member from the Planning Department earlier this week or last week. And so we were kind of short-changed in this one. None of this is decision-type stuff, so we were, we kind of just removed it from the agenda. Unfortunately, the wrong item got removed from the front of the agenda. So I just need an amendment to make, to replace UGB memo to Governor's Office with Senate Bill 974.
Okay. Can we get a, make a motion to amend the agenda item as per Mr. Corrathel's comments?
I move to approve the motion to extract the UGB to Senate Bill 974.
Second.
Ms. Ricky, run a vote.
Commissioner Ansel.
Aye.
Commissioner Ornalis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ricky.
Aye.
Commissioner Potts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodgkinson.
Aye.
And Chairman Eaglebear.
Aye.
Thank you, it passes six, zero, zero.
Mr. Corrathel.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. This is always a good opportunity, I like these opportunities to learn for free, as I call it. So this one, there was no decision-type of items on the agenda tonight. So typically, if that would have been a decisionary type of item, we would have failed to provide appropriate notice. And we would have had to delay that to the next meeting or till such a time as we could provide appropriate notice. In this case, since there's no decision being made, it can be a considerate discrepancy. We can change the agenda and move on. I go over with you guys because there's no vote to be made here or anything like that. So at any rate, I wanted to, I just wanted to see you guys before the Fourth of July weekend. So I thought we'd hold this meeting. But really, we asked DLCD to come and give a comprehensive legal update because I'm not even sure that I know what they've done at this point. That's a joke, I do know what they've done for the community. We do. But at any rate, it's always interesting to hear it in their words and give you guys a chance to ask them some questions, some things and information that we may not be privy to that's behind some of the legislation and some of that stuff. Your guess is as good as mine on some of it. But anyways, we've had about, I don't know, 12 to 15 new statutes come out over the last about year and a half that are all directed at planning and development. And so I know several of you are very familiar with that stuff. But what it does is it causes a situation where we are playing catch-up constantly. Because when they bring out something like this Senate Bill 974 here, for better or for worse, we have to then go back and implement that into our code documents, into our implementing documents. And until we can do that, we have to be aware of them and actually be processing applications and everything under the new law when it takes effect until we can get it into our books so that it matches the state law. So it's a pretty heavy lift on some of this stuff because you're going to have, you know, three and four different sections of the Development Code that are being amended by one law. So you're talking three or four new pieces of ordinance that we need to write, bring to you guys, bring to council, tailor it up a little bit if we can. A lot of it's very prescriptive from the state, but some of it, we can, you know, put some salt and pepper on it here and there. But at the end of the day, I think it's just important to note that there's a lot coming out and we are arranging with DLCD to come out and give you guys a presentation. But they, they're not even really caught up at this point on kind of documenting what the impacts of all these things are and putting together a comprehensive presentation. That's largely because the session just ended for this particular role. But there's a whole bunch more. As you guys know, we've been kind of keeping you up to date on those as they come out. So I wanted to talk a little bit about SB 974. This was a very, very problematic statute in its original form. The way that it sits now is not that impactful. There's still some pretty significant impacts here, but it's not what it was. It was going to create a situation that I believe would have been unmanageable for cities as far as being able to process applications and meet timeframes. So a lot of amendments happened, I guess, in the House because it looks like the Senate promulgated this, so it must have gone to House second. But they made substantial changes and I just wanted to go over some of these that are key provisions with you guys just so that you're aware of them. If you have any questions, we can answer them or go out and get the answers for you if we don't know. So on June 16th, 2025, Governor signed SB 974 into law. It's codified in Chapter 330, 2025 Laws and/or Laws, and is effective on or about September 29th, 25. Below you will find the key provisions, and I'll go over those. Section 1, 30-day completeness review for residential engineering plans, that's public and private infrastructure. 120 days for final decision from completeness response. Tolling of timeline for corrections or supplements and extensions allowed to applicants' written requests, maximum 245-day timeline. So this doesn't do a whole lot to us. I actually think that if folks weren't meeting this, that they were probably doing a massive disservice to their clientele being the developer community. We don't take this long to get our develop, to get our infrastructure reviews done. The only concern that it gives me, and it looks like they've dealt with it to some degree, is that a lot of that time is actually spent waiting on corrections. It's like, hey, you didn't put a sewer pipe on the plan. You're going to need a sewer pipe, you know, just to keep it simple, right? And so then they have to go back and they have to redraw that, they have to re-engineer that. And for those folks who look at engineering plans a lot, you kind of know what that means. But for others, I mean, we're talking elevation specs, you know, everything. It's not just a pipe, it's how does the pipe connect? How many valves go on it? What kind of slope does it need to be at? Is it a pressure pipe? Is it, you know, all these different things that go into that? So it can be a pretty heavy lift. So they did some tolling for that, which I think was good. And I think ultimately, it's going to put more pressure on the developer than it is on cities because I don't think cities, save for a handful that we're all aware of, I don't think most cities don't meet this timeline regularly. At least most, you know, most cities don't do meet this timeline. Section 3, this applies to the below list of applications for properties inside the UGB and zone for primarily, zone primarily for residential or mixed-use residential. Zone change applications for more residential density, planned unit development, and variance from a residential standard. It does not apply to final plats, residential building permits, final engineering plans, and Type 1 applications. So applications under this section, Section 3, are not subject to ORS 197.797, Type 3 quasi-judicial hearings. This is very impactful to planning commissions, so that's why I thought it was very, very important to share it with you guys, meaning that the city cannot take these residential density increasing proposals to a Type 3 hearing anymore. Typically, all of these, well, zone change would have gone for applicants, would have gone through a Type 4 hearing, but it looks a lot like a Type 3. Planning unit developments, variance from residential standards. All those things would have been Type 3 hearings. So so a lot of this stuff is reviewed under the Development Code except for that there's new notice requirements and there's no hearing on the initial decision. So in essence, final plats, residential building permits, final engineering plans, and Type 1 applications are not subject, well, those are still subject to the regular old rules. But pretty much everything else is not a Type 3 anymore. And we'll get you a better list of those things, obviously, we're kind of still parsing this out. But a lot of our Type 3 hearings are going away. So that's important for you guys to know. I will share with you some of my personal opinions on that. I have often, in the past, felt that Type 3 hearings and the notice and comment period were a little bit misleading to the public. Because you put something out that says, hey, let's just say, you know, this Chuck E. Cheese is going to be going in here if you're within 300 feet, if you have any comments to make, please make your comments. What makes people feel is if they don't like Chuck E. Cheese, hey, I don't want a parking lot next to me, I don't want this stuff. They feel like that kind of thing is a viable comment, and it's really not under the law, right? And as you guys know who have been doing this for a while or who do it for a living, what it ends up doing is make people feel like you guys are ignoring them and that staff is ignoring them. And we're not, we're just not allowed to consider anything that isn't directly on point to one of the criterion. So it's been a little bit misleading historically anyways. I just wish they would come out and kind of say it in more plain language, but at any rate. So those Type 3 hearings are not going to be a thing for very many applications anymore. Appeals and that sort of thing may still be able to go through Type 3. We're still waiting for some legal advice on that and how that's going to look. Do you have any questions, I can tell? I may not have the answers, but I'll try and find them.
It's like it's just conditional use now.
For all the world, it looks like conditional use and variance is about the only Type 3 applications.
Well, I mean, it pretty much eliminates the entire Planning Commission in spots across the state. Because us little small panels look at a plot, we look at things, we give our suggestions, and it also like, we've changed some things as a Planning Commission to certain projects where now it's all the burden on staff to do it as built or as drawn. Another thing I've noticed here, they've dropped it down to 100 feet notice instead of 300 feet notice, which is a huge, I mean, that 200 feet doesn't sound like a lot, but that's quite a big difference. I mean, trust me, I am not for this. You know what I'm saying? I am not for this bill. I mean, because it doesn't affect, well, us in the construction world, it doesn't benefit us in any way. It puts more burden on staff and cities to get things out faster, which I know that's the state's goal. But it puts a lot of burden on staff and the cost that it's going to put on the small cities like us to get stuff turned around faster.
Absolutely.
So this is my input. We're going to have no say on anything else that comes through the city because of this.
And I do, I, that's absolutely true. What staff has been looking at and kind of working with the city attorney's office, we haven't really gotten there yet, but we're formulating a conversation to have with them about this now that it has passed, is the fact that conditional use permits can still be Type 3. It may make a whole bunch of sense for non-residential stuff because most of this applies pretty much to residential, right? But it sweeps everything up in it. It's really residential that they're looking to, I don't know, protect, I guess, or benefit.
Mainstream.
Yes. But like for things like, you know, commercial developments, industrial developments, it may, there may be some wisdom in turning those into conditional use applications so that the necessary amenities can be added. For instance, let's just say you've got an industrial development that wants to, that's going in on industrial land that happens to be next to you because in older logging towns, you've got a lot of zone, you got a lot of use complex, just the way the town was set up. And we try to fix them when we can, but you can't, you can never iron it all out. So you got an industrial that wants to go in next to residential. Well, without that opportunity for you guys to place some of those conditions on that, right? Then it becomes very much staff discretion, and then there's an argument on whether or not that's fair. What about the other guy who did that and he didn't have to put up that big piece of screening? Well, that's because of the situation of his property, but it still gives that appearance, right? So we're going to have some conversations with the city attorney's office to see what we can do as far as conditional use goes. Because it makes a lot of sense to me, at least on its face, that we would move that direction to ensure that the community, through its representatives, appointed or elected, gets an opportunity to speak on the application to some degree. I realize that they're kind of eliminating that from residential, and I think that's their intent. But I think with some of the other stuff, that there's still an opportunity to do that and that it makes sense to do so so that the community is having input. I think it'll be more accepting of those businesses that do come in. I think it'll create for a better situation where we've got six or seven heads thinking about how is this going to impact the community? Because we can't think of everything. We certainly try, but we can't. You guys come up with all kinds of stuff that we hadn't thought of before. Every time we have one of these, it's like, huh, okay. So anyway, we're going to have some conversations on that just to kind of give you guys a look at what we're trying to do to see what can we do to try and keep as much of the authority with you guys as we possibly can because it's really the community's representatives speaking on behalf of the community, not paid-for staff, right? Not, you know, bureaucrats, frankly, even though I don't think of myself that way. So, yeah. Anyways, we are looking at those options just for whatever us were.
Gotcha.
In Section 8, this one's kind of interesting too. We only have to deal with this one for eight years, so that's good. Design standards not allowed for residential development. Let me say that again. Design standards not allowed for residential development with the exception of fewer than 20 residential units or a multifamily structure. So if you've got a subdivision, if you've got a triplex, you know, subdivision over 20 residences, all of that, no design standards. Building code still applies because we got to be able to get stretchers in, fire trucks, and all of that good stuff. I think they at least believe that. But anything else, they can kind of build it upside down and backwards, frankly. So I'm hoping that most developers will realize that doing that isn't going to create value and won't do that, but they kind of have the option to. So basically ceding the authority of the city to developers to decide what gets built there. Subject to a few exceptions. So that is, and I attached the language of the bill in case you guys wanted to kind of dive in. I was pretty broad with the stuff that I put in there. There's a whole bunch of, there's three pages, you know, of 10 font, single space about appeals. So we'll see when we get an appeal what that looks like. But at any rate, this is just another, you know, very impactful bill to the planning program in every city, ours included. And we're going to have to spend some time getting this thing integrated into our book because my ultimate goal is always that a planner would be able to go to our code and work through it and be able to spit out the appropriate decision on the other end based on our code because our code would match state law. Well, it did, three years ago. Now it's 15 statutes behind. So that's kind of where we are. So I think, at any rate, a lot of the Type 3 work that we're not going to be doing, at least for a while, unless we can kind of find a workaround, as it were, is going to be replaced with looking at development code amendments.
Which I think is good for us because it needs to happen. I think there's a lot of codes in our code structure that could need some updating and refreshing.
I absolutely agree. The sad part is we're busy dealing with these ones that are forced on us instead of the ones we know are already kind of presenting their own issues. And we're kind of beholden to, you know, we don't have a broad field of where we can go with this stuff. It's got to go somewhere inside those wickets, you know, so.
I know this is all effective now, basically, but how long did, is there, I haven't looked through this yet. Is there a period where you have to have this all implemented by?
September is when the bill takes effect. September 29th, so basically October.
October 1st.
And the odds are we are not going to have this integrated into the code by then, which it's not that terribly abnormal for us to work both out of the state statutes and out of the city code. We just like it to be in the city code.
More streamlined.
Yeah, not only for our purposes, but because we know where this stuff is, but it's really for the person that's trying to develop or build or do something. So they're going to pick up the code and they're going to say, well, wait, I did all this. And it's like, yeah, but you missed these six state laws that came out in the last two years.
Most designers or developers are aware of the state codes, that's why they're trying to push some things through also.
Yep, yep. The big ones, I always worry more about the mom and pops. The big ones are always ready, you know, they've got their team. I'm more worried about the folks that have been, you know, sitting on that little house that they wanted to do, you know, that they're going to put another bathroom on in a mother-in-law's quarters for their mom who's getting older, you know, someone who's been sitting on a piece of property that, you know, has always just been waiting to do a little duplex for their retirement fund or whatever. You know what I mean? I worry about those folks the most because the other ones are far more sophisticated. They do this for a living and they make a pretty handsome living out of it, most of them. It's just more those folks that were looking at their property or these opportunities, these potential benefits that they could reap at some point, and now they're subject to all these rules. But it could be beneficial to them as well.
Is there anything retroactively that has to be applied? Sorry, is this, is there anything like retroactively that this would have to be applied to? Or is it being, does everything just stay the same until October?
It's a great question. I'm not exactly sure. I'll have to seek legal advice if that presents itself. Like, for instance, if someone were to turn in an application like next month that would be a Type 3 today, and we'd be setting that up for a Type 3, but then maybe it doesn't go to hearing until October 5th. How should we be doing that? So if we get one of those, then I'm not going to waste, obviously, taxpayer money asking the city attorney that question unless and until we get that situation in front of us, and then I will immediately seek that advice and let you guys know. So the answer really is, I don't know. And if that presents itself to us, then I'm going to go to the city attorney and find out what their advice is on that.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? Guess if we do, we'll reach out.
Yeah, you know where to find it.
We got a lot of reading to do.
And if you think of one, please send it my way because I probably don't even know I have it too. There's just so many of them.
I think the biggest thing are the design standards for like towns like Sandy Sisters who have or want to keep a specific look and feel, that's who this is going to affect the most.
And I'm kind of curious what it does with like your master plan developments, like a Bressada Ranch, right?
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, what do they, are they able to have design standards?
I mean, is it going to break down to lot sizes? I mean, those are the fine details because as we know, there's some subdivisions that are two acres or above or half acres of lots.
I mean, just, could it be a matter of interpretation?
Every code's a matter of interpretation.
Well, it is, but my point is, is like if Sandy wants to keep an aesthetic, they can just basically say, well, this is our city, this is what we want. You know, we would like to have this. Or, you know, I would imagine the city, this is just a thought. I would imagine they would, as an example, they would say, hey, you know, we're going for a thing here, you know, we'd like you to cooperate with us if you could, you know, kind of a situation.
I do think that will happen a lot. I just question whether or not if that might be, I think that's viable. You know, someone's building this just one single-family residence or something like that. But if you're building a, you know, 7,500-lot subdivision, and it's like, hey, we'd like to have you have, you know, rain chains for your downspouts, but they cost three times as much as a normal gutter, times 100? I'm guessing they're going to say, well, now, I don't have to do that, I'm guessing.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's a very viable conversation, I understand that. So I was just, you know, as conversation, I was just like.
It's very interesting. It'll be interesting to see how all this plays out, but at the end of the day, it's just one, kind of an example of, in my opinion, all of this, the collective is an example of kind of the state really kind of taking over home rule, at least in the planning field. Is this a scary proposition for, especially for folks, you know, in communities like Malala that don't necessarily see completely eye-to-eye with the state on a lot of things? So, yeah, it'll be interesting how it plays out, and I'm guessing you're going to see some people raise their hand and say, well, we're not doing it. And see how that plays out. There'll be some test cases, hopefully, not, hopefully not us, but but if the powers that be decide that's the direction they want to go, then I'm here for it.
All right, well, thank you for all that, and we'll be in touch if we have any further questions. All right. And so that moves on to, well, I know, I just heard from Mac, so. But we do have now, if there's any other updates from staff in general.
There, I do. There are a lot of things coming up, obviously. It's on the Current, it's on our social media, it's on our reader board. If you're looking for a map, if you're looking for what's going on, who's cooking where for the Fourth of July events, check out the Current, check out our social media, it's everywhere.
There's a great events page on the Current now. Something we fought hard to get put up there, but at any rate, it's up there now and, you know, should have all these events on it. And then we've been sending out alerts and reminders and that sort of thing. As everyone knows who lives in Malala, Malala's July 4th town. So a lot of cool stuff going on. If folks are looking for it or confused, the Malala Current's a great place to sit.
Thanks for getting that on the site, Mac.
That was, that was Jessica.
Yes, thank you, Jess.
I authorized it.
Thank you. Thank you, Stan.
I didn't do anything.
Pure moral support.
Very much so. We are hiring for associate planner. So if you know anyone or anyone out there is listening and interested, please do apply. So send them our way respectively.
We are also hiring a utility one and an entry level water operator. So associate planner, utility entry level and a water operator entry level and, I'm sorry? I don't know about that. I don't think so. I don't think they posted that. I'm not going to speak out of turn on that one because I'm not positive, but possibly a police position too. I'm not sure because not my department, I haven't looked, but you may know better than I. So yeah, a lot, a lot of positions, great place to work. Let's see, what, what else do we have? Well, we've got a promotion. So you guys may or may not know Mr. Zinder. So he, he has been promoted from senior planner to planning manager, very well deserved. He's earned it and that's, that's, uh, we're really excited to have him, have him in that role. He's, he's largely been filling that role for a while now. So he's, he's just taken a step up, got the new title and, um, yeah, so.
Couple more meetings now.
So there's a, there's a high likelihood, you'll see a little bit less of me, more of him, but, um, well, not more of him, the same amount of him.
More of me talking.
But I, but I will still be here, you know, from time to time, especially if there's anything that I, I imagine the community is going to have strong feelings about. I'll be here to support anytime I can and we'll, we'll be making these for most of the part, but he'll, he'll kind of be the, the guy in charge now. So as far as from the staff side, it's exciting.
Well, that's exciting.
Let's see, some projects, let's talk about some projects. So you guys saw the Bowlander Field or Bowlander Park, whatever we want to call it, the parking area upgrades, those look really, really good. I'm excited about that. They're, they're looking great out there. We created a pedestrian safe crossing zone because we've seen so many, you know, vehicle borne attacks these days. That seems to be the new method of trying to hurt people is to drive your car through a crowd. So we put up a pedestrian safe zone. So if someone tries to do that, the only thing they're going to hurt is themselves and their car. It got, and you know, built in bollards and that sort of thing, can't get around those or through them unless you've got a really, really big rig. So at, at any rate, so that, that, that work is, is, is done for now. There's, there's a couple more light fixtures that are going to go back in there. We just pressed pause on that so that we could get through the buckaroo. Those things were a little bit, the lead time on those was a little longer than we expected. The, uh, oh, the new gazebo or the replacement gazebo at Clark Park is done, looks great. There's also an ADA pathway connection there now, so that's ADA compliant. Really, really turned out great. If you haven't seen it, go take a look. Um, you know, they, they did a lot of work, the guys, the public works crew came back in and, you know, Lance Construction did the main construction. They did an excellent job. It's beautiful. And then the public works crew came behind them, stained some things, sealed some things and saw raw wood to get that preserved. They did a lot of groundwork for the path and for the extension of the concrete pad because rather than ripping up the pad, we just expanded the gazebo and then expanded those footings out so that we could build it appropriately without having to pay for a new pad. That was perfectly fine. So, uh, so yeah, that's, that's up and running. The wastewater treatment plant is going well. We've got footings on the control building. They're still pouring all the pads for the SBR and pretty soon, I think next week or the week after, if memory serves, we're going to start seeing them go up with the walls on that. So that's really been an interesting process for me. I, I haven't been part of like any, you know, boots on the ground on a major project like this. And I've just, I've, I've never seen so much concrete go in my life. It's crazy and, and rebar, it's just nuts. If any of you guys on the planning commission want to go take a tour of that and take a look around, let me know. We'll hook you up with Seth and get you down there. All you gotta do is, you know, you gotta wear a hard hat, closed toed shoes, jeans and, and a reflective vest, but we have those for you if you don't have them. So let me know and we'll, we'll get you hooked up if you want to go take a look. It's neat. Police facility is obviously coming along well. You've seen that. The Lola project is, is started up. So that's going to be a water and sewer replacement and then it'll be a, you know, full street overlay. So we'll dig out and replacement out there. That street was really bad. We're producing a, we've got a pretty cool paving map that's going to be coming out that, that shows the paving work that's been done since we started that program up and the, the cost that's gone into that. That's intended to aid in the conversation about a potential gas tax or street utility fee, which I know that the council's not even going to consider for more than a year. I think there was some major concerns about Senate Bill 20, 2025. And they were actually going to pull this, I think, completely off the table if that were to have passed. Luckily it didn't. So that's good news for everyone who pays taxes. So, uh, let's see, I'm trying to think if there's any other significant projects that you guys would want to know about. Top of my head, I can't think of anything else. If you guys have any questions, you know where to find me. If you have any questions now, I'll do my best to answer them.
Kinda.
We're pretty good. Oh, Yelkes Park. Sorry, can I have one saved? I don't know how, I forgot about that. Yelkes Park is looking great. The, the play structure itself is supposed to arrive on July 14th. We pushed that back because the groundwork hadn't been done yet. We needed to get that contractor in there. So they're, they're going to be in there, um, working on that pretty quick here. And then we get that playground structure and every, all the, all the groundwork other than asphalt in the, in the parking lot is pretty much done. The concrete's in, the new water lines in, storm, you know, drainage, all that good stuff. Everything's roughed out. So you're going to start seeing some fixtures go in, probably looking at asphalt early next week and, you know, shortly behind that, we should have another park.
On that, are they going to open Tolliver at the same time? The pathway to Tolliver to Chief Yelkes? Or are they going to have the entry from the subdivision there?
The entry, the, the vehicle entry will be from the subdivision. This fiscal year, we have money in the budget that's been approved now to finish, this, this last year before July 1st, we did a, a very comprehensive LIDAR and, and survey of Mulala Forest Road from Mathias all the way to Tolliver to see what we actually have and how it's situated and what's there and what, what the real situation on the ground is. And it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a civil survey. So it's, it's good enough to, to, you know, draw civil plans off of. So we're reviewing that. We just got all that information back and then we are, we have money in the budget this year to conduct a feasibility study that has kind of three levels. One is what's the minimum we have to do to open that, you know? This is, we're kind of dealing with two sections of road since that foot bridge cuts it in half or not in half, but cuts it off.
Right.
So we're looking at feasibility to say, what do we have to do to open this? What's the minimum? What's the minimum? Can we just pull the gates off and open it? Is that, is that legal? You know, we were, so we need to figure that out. And then obviously what's it going to take to do full build out per the TSP so that we can plan appropriately funding wise and provide the council with the information. They need to make a decision on whether or not they want to pursue a more significant development of that road or kind of do the minimum or something in between that. So we're kind of trying to get a menu of options laid out to say, here's what we can do, you know, for this amount of money, this amount of money, this amount of money and kind of have them figure out what they, which direction they want to go. So we're, we are working on getting that back open. It's, it's a little slower process than I would like, but it's necessary.
All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that update. A lot going on. Commission, does the commission have any community information that they might know or open to share?
Mulala Park CPC is collecting donations for our garage sale, which will be coming up on July 24th. So if you have anything you want to donate, any gently used items that we could sell for sale, we can pick them up or drop off location. You can contact me or Jody Newland. We can line that up for you. It's, it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday that weekend. So it's one of our biggest fundraisers. We're pretty excited about it.
And who doesn't love a garage sale?
Right? And it's all by donation. So nothing's priced. You just come donate what you feel is fair.
Have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
You're good. You're good? I don't have anything either. So, um, so I guess that's that. So let's see here. So is there anything else good for the good of the order? No? All right. I will adjourn this meeting at 7:11 PM.
Oh, it's only 7:20.